You're about ready, Mike. I was gonna start.
Here?
Roll call. I think everybody's here and ready to get started. We need a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
No, we need a second.
My second.
Stan, second. All in favor?
I like.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Brown, Carl Brown here. He's done a water and sewer rate analysis and he's gonna kinda give us a...
Update?
An update.
Good evening, everybody. Almost evening. Again, I'm Carl Brown. I'm the president of GettingGreatRates.com. My firm, which is me, and my vice president, which also happens to be my wife. So, you know, a little tug-of-war about who's really the VP and who's the president, as you can imagine. She works with me basically enough to be able to finance her horse addiction. So she works with me part-time and mostly does data input into models and then building access databases and things like that. Our firm does utility rate analysis. That's the only thing that we do. That's the only thing that I have done since 2005, when I left employment with the state of Missouri, Missouri Department of Natural Resources. So going backwards, I worked for Missouri DNR for 14 years. I enjoyed almost every hour of almost every day and I haven't missed a day since. And it really is true. I really love helping individual clients with whatever their situation is and see it all the way through to the logical conclusion, as opposed to see it through until the DNR issues are taken care of and then they're on their own. And that's not even saying something bad about DNR. It's just life. You know, they just have to deal with their issues and then they let everybody else deal with all those other issues. But I really enjoy being able to carry you all all the way through to the logical conclusion. I wrote a report based upon analysis that I did of your water rate needs and your sewer rate needs, which I had complete hopes that it would be the final report. And I came down a little bit early before this meeting and met with Mayor Lofton and met with Peggy and we talked about assumptions and various things that are in the report. And I now find that it's a preliminary report. It's not a final report. There are some things that I will need to remodel based on new information that I've gained from them when I visited with them. And by the way, that's fairly normal. It's fairly normal for me to put together what seems to me to be a final report, but when the client, when the folks who know the details about their situation, when they read it and it occurs to them, "He didn't have that in there," or "He had this in there, but I think it was a little different than the way he has it in there." So that's the kind of thing that we did mid-afternoon. We met and talked about the analysis, the assumptions. Some of the assumptions are pretty big assumptions, too, so I need to do some remodeling. But the report that I have put together so far is gonna be very much like the one that I will end up with when I remodel a few assumptions and things a little differently. The resulting rates will be different than what I've modeled so far, but most of the assumptions, most of the analysis will end up being the same. So I still want to go over some of the, I think of them as high points. Now, people having to pay rates, they would probably think of them as low points because it means their bill would go up. But I want to go over some of the high points of the analysis in the report, but really just the high points. I don't want to bore you with deep analysis. I'll just, hopefully, suffice it to say that the analysis that I did in the rate study rate analysis world is called cost of service analysis, or a cost of service rate study. The essence, there's some deep math to it, but the essence of cost-to-serve rate analysis is if a customer causes the sewer utility, for example, to incur an expense, that customer or some group them into groups of customers, but that customer should reimburse the utility for that cost. It's a real logical kind of way of thinking. When we go about our daily lives and we buy things, we have to pay someone's cost. Now, we're also gonna pay a profit margin to them, but we need to pay their cost if we want to be fair to them and if they want to be fair to us. Utilities are first and foremost and always businesses. Utility service needs to pay for itself. So the basic notion of cost of service rates is when a cost gets incurred, whoever caused it to be incurred should reimburse the utility for that cost. So I went through an analysis process to discover all of the costs for each of the utilities and then to assign those costs to customers based on the nature of the cost. If a cost occurs just because someone is a customer, they get a bill. The bill costs money to generate. They should reimburse the utility for their share of the cost of billing them and general administration and various other things that we call fixed costs. I won't go deep into it, but fixed costs are not fixed because they don't change. Even fixed costs change, but the nature of a fixed cost is it's related to the fact that somebody's a customer. The basic fixed costs are the same for everybody. Billing is a good example of that. So everybody should be assigned that cost equally with everyone else. Some other, what we call fixed costs, actually graduate with meter size, graduate by some other criteria, so some customers should pay more of those kinds of fixed costs than other customers. In your case, you don't have too many really big unusual customers and one of the critical issues when it comes to graduating minimum charges or system development fees, connection fees, one of the really critical pieces to even assigning those kinds of costs just have to do with are you growing or growing very rapidly? If you're not growing very rapidly, system development fees or connection fees are not so important. And that's your case here. Same sort of thing on the minimum charges. If you don't have too many really unusual, really expensive, just to administer and bill kinds of customers, then a graduating minimum charge also ends up having less usefulness to you and it causes the rate structure to be more complicated. So I looked at your situation, evaluated your fixed costs. You're pretty close to all being about the same. Right now, you have a level minimum charge. Everybody who's in town and gets water service, they pay the same minimum charge. I didn't want to make that more complicated and I don't have a good reason to make that more complicated. So I calculated fixed costs, but it's gonna be a level bill for everybody just for the minimum. The same thing applies to unit charges. If you have very, very unusual usage-type customers and they really use a lot of volume as compared to the total production of the system, then it can make good sense to have unit charges that are based on the cost to produce at different levels of use. And there are some other rate structure types that you may want to consider, too. That's not much the case here in Ava. Plus, right now, you have a level unit charge. It stays the same for all volumes of use except for the first thousand gallons that each customer used. You have a 1,000-gallon usage allowance in water and then also in sewer. I kept the level unit charge structure. It's a different amount, but I kept just a single unit charge for everybody in town at least. It'll be, end up being more out of town. There are not hardly any customers who are out of town, but it would be about the same. Or it would be the same for everybody within each of those two kinds of customer classes. The one thing that I did want to recommend you all change is you do have a 1,000-gallon usage allowance right now. That's not too unusual. And part of the notion, I'm pretty sure, behind a usage allowance is you recognize that you have certain fixed costs that are going to occur whether anybody uses any volume or not. So you're trying to recover the cost of that first thousand gallons worth of those costs at least in the minimum charge. So you charge more on the minimum charge. You give everyone the opportunity to use a thousand gallons and then above a thousand gallons, you charge them a unit charge, so much per thousand gallons. That's very common. It's not actually in line with the notion of cost of service rates because I'm pretty sure everybody intuitively understands the idea of the economy of scale. The more of something you produce, the less it costs for the next increment that you produce. That means the most expensive water that you produce or the most expensive wastewater that you treat is the first thousand gallons from everybody. A whole bunch of the cost happens in that first thousand gallons. And then to do the next thousand or the five-thousandth or the ten-thousandth gallon, it costs less incrementally. So by having a 1,000-gallon usage allowance, you end up inflating the minimum charge to be able to recover the cost of the thousand gallons and then you start collecting unit charges. What that ends up doing is it drives your minimum charge higher than what it needs to be on a cost-of-service basis. And the practical implication of that is it drives the bill for a low-volume customer, and I'm gonna throw it. For me, it's a technical term. It's a slang term for everybody else, but I think of this kind of customer when I'm developing rate structures. The little old lady, widow retired, living alone on social security. That kind of a customer usually uses over 500 gallons per month. Many of them can get by with 1,000 gallons per month. Most of them can get by with 2,000 gallons per month. If you tack the cost of 1,000 gallons onto the minimum charge, whether she uses the 1,000 during one month or not, she's still gonna pay the inflated minimum charge. So when you have any usage allowance, you end up, by default, having a minimum charge that is too high. And then therefore the unit charges end up being too low. So you effectively transfer expense from high-volume customers to low-volume customers. Now, I'm not in favor, particularly anyway, in making sure that every customer class can pay their bills and everything is all hunky-dory and stuff like that, except for the fact that a utility, regardless of who owns it, is a business that needs to function like a business. One way that you do that is you have good, strong, dependable cash flow. If you end up raising the minimum charge too much and it makes it so that more low-volume, difficult-to-pay customers decide, or they don't even decide, it's just not possible for them to pay their bill, then you end up with more slow-pay or no-pay customers. So when it comes to managing the business of the utility, you don't want to, if you can help it, create more bad customers. Bad customers are those who don't pay or they pay slow. You want to try to minimize that as much as you can. So when you have an opportunity to fix a rate structure that arbitrarily makes bills higher for the more difficult-to-pay customers, you need to try to take that. Getting rid of usage allowances is a really good way to do that. Now, your allowance is not big. It's only 1,000 gallons. Most of your customers will end up using 1,000 gallons, so it all pretty well comes out in the wash. I do rates in lots of parts of the country. I do a lot of rates in the West. Here, we, on the wastewater side, we tend to use about 3,500, 4,500 gallons per month per household. In the West, they use about the same for wastewater. Water, we're pretty close to that, about 5, maybe 6,000 gallons per month. In Ava, if I remember right, it's 4,600 or so. In the West, they real commonly use 10,000, 15,000, 20,000 gallons. I had one small town in Wyoming where they averaged in residential, used 4,000, 4,000 gallons per month. I don't know what they were doing with all that water, but depending on where you are, you could end up charging a, or end up with a usage allowance that's as high as maybe 10,000 gallons and it's not gonna hurt the little lady who works hard to live on social security, kind of a customer too bad because she's probably using somewhere in that vicinity, too. But around here, they're pretty darn economical. They really try to conserve water. So I really want you to eliminate the 1,000-gallon usage allowance. That means that you've got in the vicinity of 20% more billable volume. That means the unit charge does not to be as high to be able to generate the same revenue because you're gonna generate it off all the revenue, all the usage, not just the use of other thousand. So I want to go through my rates recommendations. Now, again, these are now from a preliminary report. It will end up changing. On water, probably not too much. Sewer, it'll probably change a pretty good bit. On water, though, the minimum charge worked out for in-city residential and really its commercials, too, minimum charge of $18.28. Right now, your minimum, and Peggy, you might have to remind me because you just changed your rates the first one month, but if I remember right, it was 21-something minimum.
Was that minimum 18.20, you said?
18.28.
18.28.
Water's pretty, it's quite a bit lower.
Yeah, water's pretty cheap. So 18.28. And the unit charge, and this is for all volume, the unit charge worked out to $2.01 per thousand. Now, all of the changes that I calculated for the water rates showed that your revenues for water need to go up 23% and a little bit of change. Now, it's gonna work out as compared to your now-current rates. I based that on the rates before your most recent change. It'll be a little bit less, but you didn't raise your rates too much on the water side.
These rates, if they're riding down, are not numbers that we're gonna go by yet because we gotta wait until we got, so these numbers don't mean anything at this point.
Yeah, it's just a starting place for analysis because on water, it's probably gonna be pretty close. On sewer, it's gonna be pretty far away because your current rates, now-current rates are different than what I had modeled before. But the big change is on wastewater. I've talked a little bit about water and there's not a whole lot more that I might say just in summary about water. But on the wastewater side, that's a real different ballgame because it costs a lot more to collect and treat wastewater than it does to produce and treat and distribute water. So I'm gonna switch gears and talk a little bit about sewer rates. Just to throw a number out for you again, remember it's $18 and change minimum and $2.01 unit charge for water rates. For sewer, it worked out to $28.28 minimum and $5.80 on a unit charge basis for all volume that goes to the plant. On a winter-average water use basis, basically the water that we use and then it goes back down the sewer in the wintertime because we're not sprinkling outside or washing cars or anything. Again, those numbers are preliminary. Right now, your minimum charge for sewer is $27.98 and the unit charge is $7.04 per thousand. That's where you're at right now, so you can see I've calculated, based on preliminary data and information, a revenue reduction on the wastewater side. It's about 7.5%. So an increase of about 23 on water, a reduction of about 7.5 on sewer, based on preliminary information, or a net change in bills for a water and sewer customer, and almost all of your customers get water and sewer, of around 15% is the way it's gonna end up working out in all likelihood. There are a few really important assumptions in my modeling. I met with the mayor, I met with Peggy earlier this afternoon, and some of these assumptions are real looming. You're doing a GIS project, almost a million dollars. You need to replace a vac truck. Real expensive to do. You need, probably need to do that. You do need to replace filters at the plant. All total, those are gonna be about a million dollars in one year. And if you were to do those, you need the filters right now, as I understand. So if you were to do those next year, then you would end up on the wastewater side running a deficit. On the water, you'll still be positive, but it'll be pretty weak. Your revenues are much less than that. So what I'm describing is a fluctuation in your balances, especially on the wastewater side, that can vary by as much as a million dollars in one year. When you almost have no reserves to start with, having reserves fluctuate that much and in fact they'll go negative by several hundred thousand in the sewer fund, if you were to go with the model rates, that's a real big deal to be contemplating that you would have that kind of a swing. Now, I tried to blunt as much as that as I could by assuming that you would pay for the filter change and the GIS project with a five-year note, a five-year borrowing. And I assume that the interest rate for that would be 4.5%. I'm not really positive if I'm in the right ballpark. I'm using a USDA rural development kind of an interest rate for that. You can't get that kind of a loan from USDA, but I'm using that kind of an interest rate. That's a big assumption for around a million dollars. So I'm concerned that if we miss by 1%, then it could really mess up your reserves. And I'm also concerned that based on all of the other expenses, the revenue that you've been generating out of the current rates, and then the expenses, some of them real big, that are coming fairly soon, I'm concerned that if a couple of those assumptions about expenses are off, not in your favor, in the other direction, in one or two years' time, you know, during one or two fiscal years, they could really wreck your reserves. So I'm really hesitant now to recommend that you adopt any set of rates, for sewer even, that would result in a revenue reduction. So after talking with these folks, I really think that the thing for me to do is to remodel your rates, assume a rate that will continue to generate at least the current amount of revenue. And then in the out-years, if the modeling shows that the reserves would build to a point that would be excessive, then you would not increase rates incrementally in the out-years. You wouldn't do an inflationary increase. And in essence, what you probably will be able to do, I'll see with the modeling, but you will probably be able to adopt rates that will fix the unfairness part of the structure. So make the rate structure fair, but keep the revenues about where they're at right now. Run with those rates for some period of time. It might be three or four years, but run with those rates for a while until inflation catches up with your revenue. And then you need to do inflationary increases after that. I'll be able to model all those sorts of things based on what I learned talking with him earlier today. So those are the preliminary rates. It'll give you some sort of a basis to compare against whenever I remodel rates. I'm gonna put together the new models. I'll rewrite the report to be able to describe this new situation that we see that you're in. And then I'll send that back to you. Hopefully, what you'll be able to do is, having heard this kind of discussion about cost of service and you know that that's where I'm aiming at whenever I calculate new rates, cost of service doesn't mean that you have to raise your rates right to that level during that year. You could stretch out those increases or you could accelerate those increases, but over the long term, I'm aiming at cost of service rates for you. Add it with pay your costs and structure fairly for the rate pairs. So whatever rate, revenue level I end up at, I'm going to try to get you all to adopt a rate structure that will treat folks fairly. Have everybody pay the fixed costs that they should. Have everybody pay the unit costs that they should. And then we'll see where the level of those rates work out. And like I've said, and this is a really important point, on the wastewater side, I will model rates that will generate at least the same amount of revenue that you will generate out of your now-current rates, the $27.98 minimum charge and the $7.04 unit charge. So I'll aim at that as one of my targets for the new rates. And then we'll adjust those out-year rate increases to make, hopefully, so that you end with the desired reserve level 10 years out. Okay, that's probably as much summary as you all need to hear from me. But do you have any questions about the analysis or, you know, where this is going or anything else?
We're probably, what, two to three months out before we do anything, so we'll have some discussion before then, but we're at least, at least two months out before we make a decision on what we're gonna do, so.
And then for me, timing-wise, we're in pretty good shape for workload right now. I'll be back in the office Thursday and whenever I leave the office for two days, I have two days' worth of work that I have to do that, you know, got hauled in or something whenever I'm gone. But I'll be able to get back on your modeling and then redoing the report. And probably what I'll end up doing is I'll do the remodel, figure out where that's going to. Peggy's the one who... Peggy's the one who knows the details about the budgets and all that sort of thing. So I'll get on the phone with Peggy and tell her, you know, what I'm finding. And if it sounds like we're in, we're in the right realm, then I'll finish putting that report together, get it back out to you. And I, I don't really see that you would have a need for me to come down here and talk to you, Ken. The only thing really that I'd be able to do different then is I could just tell you what, you know, the final rates are, and they're going to be in the report. So I think you've heard the background that you need from me, and then you're just going to get the details where the rates ought to go, you know, in a couple or three weeks. And then you all get to make fun decisions about that.
The decision we don't want to have to do, but.
That's just the way it is. It's.
Well, we appreciate you coming down and sharing your analysis.
You are welcome.
Yeah, Carl, I apologize, I had not read your report. I've talked with Mayor Lofton something about it, but do you have a section in there that addresses the volume of water we're using and the volume of water we are being paid for?
I'll address that later if, and.
You can answer the question.
Yeah, I can, yeah. And I can do it later, I've got it, I've got it rubbed down here, but yeah.
How much are we using, how much of that are we being paid for? And if we're not being paid for our limits, then where is that?
I can, I'll cover that later on, but yeah, I knew you showed, I knew you showed an interest in that with, I believe you used cash bill, for example, some time ago, but I jotted down some, but anyway.
And that information and data is in the report. I do use that as part of, it's one of the criteria that I try to model for, to have a look at your unbilled for water. Unbuild for water includes a number of things. Some of it is use in maintaining the system, some of it is just, it just doesn't get billed or didn't get collected.
How about billing directly? How about old meters billing correctly?
We're replacing meters now, as we can.
We replaced a bunch.
We replace, use about a dozen a month, twelve to twenty-four a month on that order as we can afford them, so, yeah. We're gaining on that each month, so.
At any rate, in my analysis, all I had when I was running the analysis was your production volume versus from the data that I got from you all, the build volume. The difference then is the unbilled volume, some of the billed volume is used in maintaining the system, flushing lines, stuff like that. Some of it just goes away, you just don't know where it went to. So the volume that I had as unbilled is, volume-wise, is too much because it includes the water used in maintaining the system. About two-thirds, it looks like, is used that way. Only about a third of the volume just doesn't get billed for whatever reason or however it happens. So it, right now, it looks worse than the report, but I'll update that information in the report, too.
Thank you.
Well, you are welcome. I'll tell you what, I've enjoyed working with you all, and I don't know if anybody was here back in, I believe it was 2013. I analyzed rates for you back then, and you all reset rates. And I'm pretty sure that you went on a rate adjustment, annual rate adjustment scheme of method since then, where you're increasing minimum unit charges incrementally each year. I want to congratulate you on a few things. One, that sort of a procedure, because it recognizes that inflation happens and you need to keep up with inflation. And at least partly due to that sort of a process, you have on a water and sewer combined basis, you don't need too much more revenue than what you're generating right now. In other words, overall, the rates don't need to go up very much to keep even with expenses. You need some, but not near so much as a lot of clients that I see the first time around, they need between twenty and forty-five percent increase right away. And then inflationary increases after that. You've gone through that first part of the process. You're mostly at the annual inflationary increase part of the process. So you're into the part of the process that's pretty easy to do and it's not too painful. You need a little adjustment to get the structure a little more fair, but you're doing a pretty darn good job. So I always like coming back to past clients and being able to tell them that because it usually means that, first of all, I did a pretty good job of figuring out what their needs were going to be some years ago, but mostly because you've been doing a good job of keeping up with it, and it looks like you've been doing that, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You all. Unless you all have anything else.
Yeah, I'll start it, yeah. You don't have to.
Thank you. Moving on, will, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes, past minutes? Yeah. Any changes? You got it? That will stand as presented. Peggy, do you have your six months?
Yeah, we have in your packet your six-month financial report. Just kind of, and it's unaudited, I always preface that because they'll come back in in a few months and change everything, but overall, fund balances are staying in a positive. We did have a reduction in general fund overall, but we're not transferring as much into general fund as what we were, so we're kind of expecting that. Down at the bottom, it does show that our indebtedness is down, which is great. We're down below two-point-five now, a little over two-point-four, and another big payment will go out this month, so it'll drop down even more. So I felt like, overall, we're staying steady and making some progress on our debt.
And our reserve right now is about half of what our debt is.
Yes.
Maintain that, that's, that's, that's pretty good, and if we can maintain that and then.
I thought that was good. Early and I did look at that, if you look at the report from, at the end of June, you know, we're trying to set back those reserve funds, and if something were to come up and we needed to make a big payment, we've got, you know, kind of technically in reserve about half of what our debt is, so that's, that's a good thing. I think a real positive stat.
Our, our goal is just to maintain as much of that as we can. And I think we can do that. Okay, Peggy's, or not Peggy's, Suzanne, you have a lot of reading to do. We've got five ordinances tonight. It won't take too long.
I do. Do you want me to speed read?
Speed read. Everybody's wanting to get through them.
I don't have ordinance numbers, but I do create bill numbers just in case we have to go back like next meeting, so. Bill number nineteen oh six oh nine is an ordinance of the city of Ava, Missouri, code of ordinance amending chapter one-ten, noting to provide for the placement of medical marijuana facilities in specific zoning districts within the city limits.
Do we have a motion on the first reading?
Motion approved.
You have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on that at any time?
Basically, we maintained the privileges, you know, setbacks, and then I guess the only other thing was a special use permit, but basically, everything's the same on that, so.
Can you want a second reading on that? Oh, did we, we never vote on ever, in favor, with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Second reading on that?
Okay. Bill number nineteen oh six oh nine, an ordinance of the city of Ava, Missouri, code of ordinance amending chapter one-ten, noting to provide for the placement of medical marijuana facilities in specific zoning districts within the city limits.
Motion on the second reading?
Motion to approve second reading.
Keith and I'll second it. Stand on the second, I think. All in favor?
Bill number nineteen seven ten, an ordinance to amend the city of Ava, Missouri, code of ordinance is by removing chapter forty-two, environment, section eighty-one, and placing it in reserve, and amending chapter ninety-four, traffic and vehicles, section eighty-four point one, noise, adding a new chapter, ninety-four, traffic and vehicles, section eighty-four one.
Because this is a noise ordinance to address the compression release brakes on automobiles. And anyway, this is, if y'all want, I don't know how much you've read on that, but if you want, we'll just have a one reading tonight, and then at the next meeting, if you want to, we can, we can add the presenting discussion or whatever changes that you might want likely in the second reading. If you want to do that, that's fine. So do we have a motion for the first reading on this ordinance?
I make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
No, a second. All in favor in the first reading?
Aye.
All right. And then we'll, we'll wait till the next meeting to have the second reading, which I sent by, must have.
Okay, bill number, sorry? Bill number nineteen seven eleven, an ordinance to amend ordinance number ten forty-seven by replacing it with a new ordinance, accepting and approving a contract, said document called Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Weight Binding Signing Agreement by and between the city of Ava and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
Okay, we have a motion on the ordinance.
I make the motion to approve first.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second that one.
Keith's second, and discussion on that, you know what that, we finally got to the point where we're signing that, an agreement with, with the state on the weight binding signs after quite a, quite a length of time. And actually, the signs are ordered, and they should be, or, I'm going to say, I mean, but anyway, this is just a formality with the state, so. All in favor?
Aye.
This one, we can take a second on because it's.
Yes, yeah, we can go ahead and take a second reading on this, yeah, if you want.
Second reading nineteen seven eleven, an ordinance to amend ordinance number ten forty-seven by replacing it with a new ordinance, accepting and approving a contract, said document called Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Weight Binding Signing Agreement by and between the city of Ava and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
And motion on the second reading?
Motion to approve on the second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
No, and all in favor?
Aye.
Bill number nineteen seven twelve is an ordinance to amend the Ava zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map and repealing that part of the ordinance in conflict herewith to change zoning from B-two central business to B-three general business of property located at eight oh eight Springfield Road in Douglas County, Missouri, and known as PC Express LLC as described in legal descriptions below by the request of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do we have a motion on the first reading?
Motion to approve.
No. I'll second the motion. Keith, I'm the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading, bill nineteen seven twelve, an ordinance to amend the Ava zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map and repealing that part of the ordinance in conflict herewith to change zoning from B-two central business to B-three general business of property located at eight oh eight Springfield Road in Douglas County, Missouri, and known as PC Express LLC as described in legal descriptions below by the request of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion on the second reading?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second reading? All, all in favor?
Aye.
One more ordinance.
One more. Bill, bill number nineteen seven thirteen, an ordinance to amend the Ava zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map and repealing that part of the ordinance in conflict herewith to change zoning from AG Agriculture to B-three general business of property located at twelve oh seven Prince Street in Douglas County, Missouri, and owned by Lowell Stewart as described in legal descriptions below by request of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion to accept. First, first reading on the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Keith, do we have a second? No, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, abstained.
Abstained.
Okay.
Okay, second reading, bill number nineteen seven thirteen, an ordinance to amend the Ava zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map and repealing that part of the ordinance in conflict herewith to change zoning from AG Agriculture to B-three general business by property located at twelve oh seven Prince Street in Douglas County, Missouri, and owned by Lowell Stewart as described in legal descriptions below by request of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good. Motion to accept the second reading?
I'll make that motion to approve second reading.
I'll second.
No, and all in favor?
Aye.
I abstained.
Abstained.
Okay. That was pretty quick. Do the ordinance have anything? Want to bring in tonight? I mentioned something about the weight, weight binding signs, we finally got that taken care of, so, and there originally was six of them, and when we got done with Michael Wake with Willow, which he helped, was really helping, trying to get them designed like we wanted them, we're down to four, which is okay. But anyway, they're, they'll be here pretty, pretty quick, and that, I think the state will help us put them up, so. And we're advertising right now for, or going to advertise for a bid for our storage building down here on Lester Street. It's on the south side, I noticed this past week, it was just about gone, and we've got some stuff stored in there that we need to keep dry, so anyway, we're, we'll be taking bids on that. And it shouldn't be too long to buy it because it's not, it's not a big roof, so, but it does need to be replaced. And the carburetor is installed and working at the airport, and requesting bids for the generator for the, the generators for City Hall, wastewater treatment plant, PD, that was just a three, right? And we're advertising for bids on that. And it looks, I talked to Aqua, what was that? I should have already happened, but anyway, one of the firms that I talked to about the filter, and they will come up and do one filter for, round figure is one hundred and thirteen thousand, I think it's one twelve nine hundred, but one, one hundred and thirteen thousand. And we do have them scheduled to come in September, and they might try to get here before that, but they're going to try to be, right now, it looks like September, but anyway, like I say, they'll try to work it in sooner. And the brick for the, for the walkway over here at the, at the park, they'll be in tomorrow. They said they'd be here before noon tomorrow, so it looks like about the end of this month, first of next month, we'll start the, the walkway with our papers for the veterans. And our sewer project over on Grand, they started it today, and they, they are across Old Five Highway headed west, so they, they got started on there and, and moving. I, I thought they'd done pretty good just getting across Old Five Highway today and getting filled back in, so. And to Keith's question a while ago, he was talking about water loss in our system, and I had, we got a report back from DNR, and that was Jeff Colby, I'm going to say about a month ago, and he said our water loss was about eleven percent, which they, they wanted under ten or under, but we've got, just from within here, we've probably got fifteen meters that are not even being measured. But anyway, we're changing that. We need to know how much, how much, how much water we're using, and I think that as far as I, the way I understood, Jeff, the only meter that the city reads and keeps track of is at the treatment plant. And then to address what Carl was talking about on the backwashing, I think is what he, the term he used, but that's what we, backflushing, that was what it was, not backwashing, backflushing. That's where they go out and like Keith Jones says, one of my water stations. That's where they go out and like, Keith Jones says, one of my waters tasting a little. And they go up and they, and they flush it. But they don't have a way to measure the amount of water, I guess, unless they use a watch. And it's just a guesstimation. But, but when the DNR done that report, it was 11 percent. And, and that's not accounting for all the meters we have within, that's not being measured, so.
That's a pretty good percentage.
Yeah, it really is.
I've seen cities that put there around 37 percent, 50 percent.
Anyway.
Yeah, real good, yeah.
And I think that was part of also Carl's report. He was looking at that 30 percent range, but he didn't have all the information from this DNR report. So that's one of the reports I'm going to get in hand.
But anyway, that was, I knew, and that's the reason I looked this up and I, where's all this going to? And, and because I knew you had made some interesting, interesting remark about, you should get cash bill.
Yeah, cash bill. That one, that is around 33, 35 percent.
A lot, and, but he, Carl, in his analysis, he, he just came up with a round figure, $150,000. So I asked him about that, and anyway, it's not, it's really not an accurate figure, so. But anyway.
Well, that'd make a big difference in your predictability.
Yeah, yeah.
Your water loss.
But anyway, it, it is about 11 percent with the DNR report. But actually, if everything was measured, it's going to lower it down, I'm going to say, less than 10 percent. So we're, we're in good shape. And then the meters, we're getting a better read on the meters each month because we are replacing them and, and getting a better read on that, so. And I don't, I don't have any more for open. I have a motion, or I'd like to have a motion go in the club.
I'll make the motion go in.
Got a motion going club, but.
Second.
All in favor? I won't be there. I'll be there.